We'll go ahead and get started. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is behind Ms. Knutson there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here. Last time we talked about we were in royalty because Alicia was here and had won most of the awards at Red River. Well, the second half is Evan. He won most of the awards over at Central High School. So congratulations to both of you. And congratulations on, I'm assuming you're going to be crossing the stage in a couple of weeks for your graduations. Congratulations. Let's move on to approving the agenda. We have one addition to the agenda. Under seven E, we're going to, we're going to, we have a new E. And Dr. Brenner, maybe you can help explain this for me.
Yes, at our last meeting, what we did was we declared an emergency for the roof at Schrader Middle School. And what we actually need to do is declare an emergency for not only the roof, but for the courtyard. That's also the drainage, the drainage piece to that, and where we would do some infill. So we'll add seven E. Grand Forks Public School District Number One School Board Resolution declaring emergency for Schrader Middle School roof repair and courtyard. And then all the others will just bump down, and then we'll still talk about Schrader Middle School Courtyard Project.
Any questions or concerns about the agenda? If not, oh, and I should comment, we have Cynthia on phone right now. She's not here physically, and Amber will be joining us a little later on the phone, too. So seeing no additions or corrections, can I get a motion to the amended agenda? We have a motion by Jeff and a second by Chris. Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no. Thank you. Let's move on to celebrating success. And Mr. Ripley, are you up first? Go ahead, Mr. Ripley.
Good evening. Eric Ripley, Executive Director of CT and Technology. Certainly privileged tonight to be able to help provide some well-deserving recognition to the classified employee of the fourth quarter in Mr. Jake Geffrey. Mr. Geffrey is an IT system specialist for the Grand Forks Public Schools. His primary responsibilities, you know, he's jack-of-all-trades. The primary would be is to support the auditorium and theater facilities of the district and all things that go on within those facilities. And so a strong supporter of music, theater arts, fine arts, professional development, and any performances that we have across the district. Certainly, I could go on and on about him, but I thought it would be best if I pulled some comments directly from the nominations on behalf of his colleagues. Some of these are just really remarkable in terms of indicating the type of value that he has, not only to the district, but to those that he works with. One of his nominations, he received multiple for this category, says, "I'm not sure there are words to describe the impact that Jake Geffrey has on our schools. Beyond that thought, he has asked to complete job assignments outside of his job description and does so without complaint and to the highest standards. Typical day for him, in the morning, he was at Red River putting on the finishing touches on the technical aspects of their production of Footloose. In the afternoon, he was at Grand Forks Central making sure their production was ready for their performance run. After GFC's long rehearsal, he went back to Central's gym to check on their audiovisual equipment. And then before he went home, went back to Red River to fix an issue with one of their musical's technical aspects. Did all these things to make sure that they were working to the highest standard and effectiveness." Goes on, "He spends countless hours helping to design, construct sets for all shows, all while having a student-centered approach to these ideas. He wants the students to be involved in the process by learning concepts and being actively involved in the technical aspects of the drama productions. Besides all of the students involved, there is no one more vital to the theater programs and their success than Jake Geffrey." It's quite high praise for him. Second nomination, just a couple of comments pulled out from those. "He remains calm during extremely stressful times when producing theatrical shows for the high schools and spa." And I love this one. "If Jake Geffrey cannot win this award, no one can. Ask around the district, the high schools, any administrator, and see how much they value him. He is remarkable." Now Jake unfortunately could not be here tonight to accept the award, but he did provide some comments. I think it'd be appropriate to read those. He said, "I'm very sad I cannot make it to tonight's board meeting, but I'd like to say that I love what I get to do every day, and the staff and students that I get to work with are really the reason that keeps them coming back day after day. For the past 15 years, fostering the growth of students and seeing them bloom in a fine arts setting has been one of the most rewarding things. I'm proud to call Grand Forks Public Schools my home." So on behalf of Mr. Jake Geffrey, I'd like to accept his award as the Classified Employee of the Quarter, and we will find a very appropriate time to present that award to him personally. So help me congratulate Mr. Jake Geffrey. Thank you.[779.43][779.43](applause)
Thank you, Mr. Ripley. And now to introduce our Certified Employee of the Quarter. I'm going to call on Ms. Belden from, Principal from Twining. Thank you.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to be here this evening to honor Chelsea Norenberg, the Grand Forks Public School Certified Employee of the Quarter. Ms. Norenberg has been teaching first grade at Nathan Twining Elementary and Middle School for the past seven years, and I really want to say Chelsea is a true gem. She works hard to create a classroom full of joy, high student engagement, and a love of learning. You will often see the students singing and dancing on their brain breaks as she sings and dances with them. Her philosophy is to build relationships where students feel loved and have a sense of belonging. Because of this, students love to be in her class and long remember her after they move. Oftentimes, students will stop by her classroom just to say hi. Chelsea works hard to provide meaningful instruction and engage her students in the learning process. She is a leader in the implementation of Marzano effective teaching strategies using learning goals, exit slips, and proficiency scales, just to name a few. Her students often stop me in the hall to tell me what their learning goals are in math or reading, and they are so proud that they know this. Ms. Norenberg works very hard to do what is best for kids and is very deserving of this wonderful recognition. Please help me in congratulating Chelsea.[886.32][886.32](applause) She also has her mother with her this evening, and her son Asher to help her celebrate. I would also like to extend congratulations for Michelle Shepherd, our school board president at the Grand Forks Air Force Base. Michelle was unable to be here tonight, but wanted to make sure that we sent her your congratulations as well.
Hi. I'm Chelsea Norenberg. This is my son Asher. He's joining me, I guess. I just want to say thank you to Michelle Shepherd for nominating me so this could all come to be. And I thank my principal Sherry for helping guide me to where I am today and making me a better teacher by giving advice and just always being a mentor I can go talk to. I thank all of my colleagues that I have worked with at Twining, whether it has been for a month or seven years. They have all been my family, and Twining has been my home, and I love it there. The families out there have helped me build relationships with the community, and they're very involved, which makes me love going to work even more. And I thank my students, most importantly, because they're the best students. They're the absolute best out there, and they just keep me going. And I'm just very appreciative of where I've been the past seven years and all everybody has done for me and helping me become the person I am. So, thank you. And thank you to the committee that chose me to be this recipient. Thank you.[994.25][994.25](applause)
He might become a boxer with that punch. He's got a good punch for a little guy, so congratulations. Let's move on to item, item four, which is Approval of the Minutes, the May ninth minute meeting, which is on electronic pages three through six. I think there's just one correction on the very end about the family listening session at Valley. I think that was May 11th and not April 11th, I think. This is the only correction I have on that. Are there any other corrections or additions to the minutes? We have a motion by Doug for approval. Do we have a second? Second by Chris. Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
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 Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Let's move on to the public comments, number five. I normally read my statement, but for time's sake, I'm not going to read it because we have a very, very long agenda. We have one individual who wants to address the board. Mr. Brenner, go ahead.
On March 21st, I had a meeting to discuss the policy FDI AR with the superintendent and his assistants. During that time, I provided many cases and statistics that refute the information in the policy and also identified the breakdown in communication between primary stakeholders, that is, the parents and the schools. The schools that execute this policy are circumventing those stakeholders, and they're doing that by willfully withholding information crucial to the physical, mental, and spiritual well-being of the children. I was told on the 22nd of March, this would be brought to the policy committee, and in another conversation, I was told it was provided to legal counsel. What I'm seeking is what suspense has been placed on this action and the current status. On 11 May, I was contacted by a concerned parent in the district, so I sought information on the execution of policy FDI AR. I was stonewalled by the school administration and also by the associate superintendent of secondary education for five days. On the fifth day, I was provided the answer that I was looking for. What I'm concerned about is during the attempt to obtain information, it was identified by the associate superintendent that, quote, "The building administration and myself are simply following policy designed to support an historically underserved population of students." When I asked who was underserving our children and how they're being underserved, the question was left moot. I questioned this statement this way. How has Grand Forks Public Schools been underserving students? Which students have not been granted access to the same instruction, the same sports, the same clubs, or the same meals? Title IX is very clear in the requirement to ensure that, quote, "No person in the United States shall, on the basis of sex, be excluded from participation in, be denied the benefits of, or be subjected to discrimination under any education program or activity receiving federal financial assistance." My question is simply, how have we, this school district, violated Title IX, and who's going to be held accountable? On 19 May, I submitted Form GAA-C-E-1 and sought consideration of numerous pornographic materials. Bestiality, pedophilia, and sexually explicit materials are not conducive to an elementary and secondary education setting. My question is, what is a process for review and the timeline expected for response? See, I run businesses, I run people, and I always, I always schedule it. I need, I need a suspense. I was informed that a student in middle school, South Middle School, is walking around wearing animal ears and an animal tail. They're calling themselves a furry. We had this discussion in our meeting also. The dress code for South is the same as it is for all schools in Grand Forks Public Schools. Quote, "Inappropriate attire may include, but is not limited to, any clothing or accessory, including makeup and hairstyle, that draws excessive attention to an individual student." Question, why is this type of clothing being allowed in school? Finally, well, not finally, there was an emergency declaration to allow funds and circumvent the policies for contracting. In the minutes that we just approved, it states-
Your three minutes are up, so please wrap it up, Mr. Brenner.
Yes, sir, thank you. It states, "Finances would come from the building fund. If approved, the following project could also be completed: courtyard infill to provide an enhanced learning environment." I'd just like to know what enhanced learning environment means, because we're going to be spending money on it. And finally, what is our inspection schedule for the facilities? I could only find inspections for mold on the website. There were no scheduled inspections on hand. After reviewing photos of Schroder from a facility's perspective, it's concerning to have the higher roofs draining onto a flat roof instead of sloping to the edge and draining it onto the ground. So I was hoping that I could be provided or shown that we're actually doing facilities' scheduled inspections, so we can get ahead of our issues we're running into. Thank you very much.
Let's move on to item six A, which is Review of School Board Norms. Mr. Carpenter.
Be prepared, be on time, value and respect each other, exercise thoughtful deliberation and conversation, be professional at the board table and when visiting with the general public, speak up when the norms are not being followed, and advocate on behalf of students and keep the community in mind.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Let's move on to six B, which is Health Insurance Committee Report. It's, there's a brief memorandum on page eight, and I'm assuming Lindsay's going to give us more information than that. Thank you for being here, Lindsay.
Good evening, President Lund and members of the school board. On March 31st, the Health Insurance Committee approved the advertisement for bids for the district's self-insured medical prescription plan administration and stop-loss insurance authorizing Brown &amp; Brown, formerly Hayes Companies, the district's consultant, to accept and review the bids. The Grand Forks Public School District then released a public notice requesting bids on April 13th, which closed then on April 29th. Four insurance companies submitted proposals, all the same, all with the same plan design, and the proposals were reviewed by Brown &amp; Brown and presented to the Health Insurance Committee last Thursday. It was then voted on by the district's Health Insurance Committee that Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Dakota, as the lowest responsible bidder, would be selected as the district's health insurance carrier effective September 1, 2022, keeping the same plan design at a projected 6% overall cost decrease.
Questions? Go ahead, Doug.
So the 6%, is that premium costs will go down 6%? Or is that other costs?
It's overall, so there's also additional costs that they're projected to take care of, such as implementation costs, administrative costs, pharmacy costs that play into that overall 6% decrease. Same plan design, but overall 6% decrease.
Just one quick question. Is this a one-year contract or three years or?
Three years.
It's a three, I'm sorry, I probably missed it.
No, you didn't. Good question. Thank you.
Other questions? And of course, this doesn't require board action, the Health Committee has control of this. This is just for information. Seeing no other questions? Did you have a question?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I see the sun is really blinding some people. If we could just close the one shade a little bit. I was trying to sign language quietly, but I got caught.
Could you sing us a chorus of Blinded by the Light? I can't remember the name of the song, but if there aren't any other questions, Lindsay, thank you for presenting. Let's move on to seven C, which is Debrief of our building tour that we had just recently. And I think it's this side this week, right? Isn't it? So that's you, Doug. You gotta, you gotta talk for your whole side there.
Okay, well, I think again, you know, the staff does an amazing job of keeping those facilities looking good and as functional as possible. I think a lot of similar concerns, lunchroom too small. I mean, they got 500 and some kids going there. There's about a two and a half hour period that they rotate kids through. Actually, two classrooms have to have lunch in their classrooms because of the way things. So I mean, space is an issue which we find in a lot of our elementary buildings, but I think they do a good job of making things work for that school and for the students and the staff. But, you know, small, no exterior lighting in the number of classrooms, small classrooms. So, but staff does a good job. They look good. Green space, you know, they've got some green space there, they've got some, but when you got two campuses in one with head start there, there's a lot of kids present and that, so that's my thoughts, I guess.
Jeff?
Agree with all those that Doug said, too, and so I won't repeat those. The only other one that I can think of is the entryway. It'd be nice to have a secure entryway there where we could get people halfway in the building and then they could be checked in a little bit more securely than what they have now.
Thank you. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And to piggyback on that, the one piece that we've seen in a number of schools is if parents come to visit, there will always be a bit of a walk to get to that entry. So they're talking, you know, trying to upgrade the ability to park closer to the door. And the other thing that I noticed is the natural, where the windows are for natural light, they are very small windows from the era that the school was built, so there's minimal natural light coming in, yet they try to be, some of the new construction, there was some light windows put in that does allow that natural light in. But you can certainly see a distinct difference in a school with less natural light than schools that have more. But I would agree with everything that was said prior.
I don't really have anything else to add, but I did have a question. I forgot to ask Angie, but maybe Dr. Lewis knows. Is, I was wondering about collaborative space. You know, my comparison, of course, is Discovery, where you've got this collaborative space where you can get three or four sections in the same grade together in those open areas. And I didn't see a lot of that there, other than like the cafeteria here or the gym. Do you know if there's any other collaborative space there?
Thank you for the question. No, it's exactly what you stated, the cafeteria, the gym, although they are very creative with their usage of the hallways and things, but they do the houses as well. So we could definitely use more space there as well. So to your point, we definitely don't have those spaces.
Dr. Brenner, did you have anything to add? Okay. Brandon, do you have anything to add? Okay, good. Well, thank you. Let's move on to item for Action Seven. Seven A is the Consent Agenda. It's on electronic pages 10 through 19. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Moved by Doug, seconded by Chris. Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Let's move on to item seven B, which is Waiver of Years of Experience on electronic page 20. Dr. Brenner.
Thank you, Dr. Lund. Normally, this appointment would have run through Consent Agenda, but as I've shared with you in the past, filling some of our positions is becoming more and more difficult, particularly in some of the content areas that we have fewer specialized people. So Ms. Mary Ann Crowe is a German teacher, and our pool was very shallow for the German teacher position at Central High School. We considered this a hard-to-fill position, staffed this with our leadership team, our expanded cabinet team, and also board leadership. And in the negotiated agreement, there is some language that allows the board to waive beyond the 10 or 11 years of experience to allow a candidate to bring in all- to waive beyond the 10 or 11 years of experience, to allow a candidate to bring in all years of experience, and this is the case for Ms. Crowe. So down to the final paragraph on page 20. Given the aforementioned, the administrative recommendation is to allow 23 years of experience to be brought into the district by Ms. Crowe and to approve her teaching appointment. She would be placed at BA plus 30, step 24, at a salary of $72,161.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, do we have a motion and a second? We have a motion by Jeff and a second by Chris. Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Cindy, did we lose Dr. Shab, do you know?
She's there.
Okay, thank. Let's move on to item 7C, which is appointment of South Middle School Principal Catherine. It's on electronic pages 21 through 33.
Thank you, Dr. Lund. I'll just read from the memo that you see in front of you. So I'm pleased to recommend Travis Neal is the new principal of South Middle School beginning July 1, 2022. Mr. Neal currently serves as the associate principal at Century Elementary and has prior experience teaching fifth and sixth grade in both the state of Washington and in Grand Forks Public Schools. Mr. Neal earned his administrative credentials through the Minnesota State Morehead, a master's in technology curriculum and instruction from City University of Seattle, and a bachelor of science and education from the University of North Dakota. Mr. Neal has demonstrated effective leadership in building positive school culture, family engagement, social-emotional learning, multi-tiered systems of academic and behavioral support, instructional vision, student leadership development, and high reliability schools framework. The interview team, led by myself, included 12 additional panel members, including teachers from each grade level, counseling, par educator, special education, and district leadership. Three internal and two external candidates were interviewed and one additional external candidate withdrew on the day of the interviews. Mr. Neal was selected as the candidate of choice and as his experiences and vision aligned best with the building needs articulated by South's leadership team, paired with evaluative data. The administrative recommendation is to hire Mr. Travis Neal, South Middle School's principal, for the 2022-2023 school year at a salary of $107,839, education factor of $2,200, and school factor of $2,500, for a total of $112,539.
Questions or comments for Catherine? Or, or a motion?
So I, I move we accept.
Okay, do we have a second? Second by Doug. Now I'll ask any further questions or comments. Cynthia, do you have any questions or comments?
No, no, thank you.
Okay.
I agree with the motion.
Okay. Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion, no? Motion carries. Thank you, Catherine. Let's move on to item 7D, which is general fund financial statement on electronic pages 34 through 43. Brandon?
Thank you, President Lund, members of the board. I'm happy to be here to present the first financial update that I get to provide. You'll see in your packet, I've provided both the general fund financial statement and then the year-over-year comparison, so the first being against the budget. The quick summary over the first 10 months of the fiscal year, revenues were just over $100,000, not $101,117, and expenditures just over 85, I'm sorry, $100 million, and the expenditures are just over $85 million, resulting in revenue over expense of $14.7 million. When you look through, I wanted to just point out a couple of things in addition to the notes that were included. At the first document, the general fund financial statement, one thing that might pop out is the equipment and furniture line in the expenses. That looks to be much greater than what was budgeted, because that's true, and those are related to ESAR dollars that are being spent. So that's, that's not unexpected expenses, just coming from a different pot relative to the budget. And then also, I wanted to make a note, there's service awards and employee recognition near the bottom of that other expenses that would show a budgeted amount of $15,500, whereas the current year that they spend, expense is over $664,000. That would catch your eye. That, that is a miscategorization I wanted to point out, the system has taken some money we invested with the state in our, in our Stars reporting software, so that is not actually into the service awards or employee recognition. Wanted to point that out. And then just, when you look through the financial statement year-over-year, you'll notice that's what's consistent is, you know, the, the revenues are in a better place and the expenditures are in a better place. And so, a little bit more than the year prior at this time at 2.3%, and a little less in the expenditure is about 1%. And that just brings our, our revenues over expenditure about $3 million a little bit better than last year. So in a very healthy place, headed in the right direction. The charts that are associated, you'll be used to seeing. Was able to connect with Mr. Bergy and prepare these charts to help illustrate some of the things I've just talked through. Maybe I'll stop there, but happy to answer any questions.
Clarifying questions or comments for board members? You'll, you'll hear this from me almost every month, but are, are we still on target for our ending fund balance at the end of June, probably, right now?
Yeah, yep, we're on target. And then also planning with Dr. Brenner to bring back a broader picture of where we were headed with that, that five-year or that 15% of expenditures, that healthy balance in the general fund, we're going to bring an update back probably in July.
Other board members have clarifying questions or comments? Go ahead, Doug.
Just one, and I think this is, somebody's asked this at a prior meeting, but I don't recollect the answer. It's on tuition. You know, on the year-over-year, they're about the same, but from a budget to, to actual, it's way, I mean, it's way different. Budgeted about $1,376,000, we've collected 216, so we're short a million, and I can't remember the answer, it just still seems-
Yeah. That's reasonable question, one that I had asked, and perhaps, Dr. Brenner, you have something more to add here, but I did look that up too. It's been budgeted a little low, and, and Mary Osowski helped me look up April timeframe. So same point last year as this, the April balance was $437,000, so maybe, you know, I need to investigate exactly why we budget that number. But the one thing I'd like to come with assurance is, is that we're right where we would expect to be at this time, despite that budget number.
So we're where we've been in prior years, do, do we know what it ended up a year ago? I mean, I'm just, I'm concerned that if we're going to end up at 400,000, we're 800,000 short, I mean, I think we just need to be really careful what next year's budget looks like to be 100% accurate.
Absolutely.
And it may end up be, and going to end up to be $1,376, too, I don't know that, but-
Dr. Brenner?
We'll come back with that, that actual information. Some of that could be tied to our impact aid tuition payment as well. But we'll, we'll find that out, Doug.
I know, I know there's a logical answer, because we've asked this before, and then if you look at, if you look at the expenses with tuition, they're, they're way off as, as well, and I know there's a logical answer, I just can't remember it either.
Yeah, and, and I apologize, Mr. Carpenter, I was, I was commenting on the expense side, not on the revenue side, but we'll come back with more information.
Other clarifying questions or comments?
I have one.
Go ahead, Cynthia.
So under equipment and furniture, let's see, it looks like page 37 of the electronic, either that or 38. Equipment and furniture, the budgeted amount was $927,000, and the actual was $2,299,000? Am I reading that right? What's-
Yep, yep, thank you, member Shab, that's exactly right. This is where some of the ESAR dollars are coming into play, and it wasn't anticipated to this degree here, so I, I also saw clarification there, and, and you look through the line items and you see some bigger expenses, $450,000, for example, of, of trying to expend those dollars where appropriate, within the timelines around those ESAR dollars.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
And those expenses are completely reimbursable through ESAR dollars, it's even-
Yes.
We get that money in and it gets spent out evenly, correct?
Yes, yes, thank you for that point, Dr. Lund.
Other clarifying questions? If not, we have a motion by Doug to approve, do we have a second? Second by Chris. Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
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 Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Let's move on to the new 7E, which is declaring an emergency for Schrader Middle School roof repair and courtyard. Dr. Brenner?
Okay, sorry, I just wanted to make sure that we, we had the right amount of board members sitting at the table for this one.
So, so Amber is now joining us for, for this part of the meeting, so-
She's, she's not on yet.
She's not on yet, okay. She will be.
So in order for us to execute the Schrader Middle School courtyard project, we needed to back up and make sure that we had a school board resolution declaring an emergency, which we did for the roof, roof repair, but we didn't have for the courtyard. So the, the loose document that you have in front of you, which is now 7E, that basically lays everything out so that when Mr. Arnold comes to the microphone, we can start having those conversations about the, the degree of work we're going to do at Schrader. If it's just going to be the roof, or if it's going to be the roof and infill, you'll see our recommendation there when we get to that item. So what we need from the board first is to pass a resolution so we can have the next conversation. So that's what this document is all about. I'm happy to read it to all of you, but if you're good with the way it is presented in front of you, I won't read it to you.
Clarifying questions by board members?
Just for the record, I, I won't have seen that.
We can email it to you. Or, or send it to you so you've got it. Do, do you want Dr. Brenner to read it? Maybe that would be better, because then you can, you can be informed to vote. Dr. Brenner?
Okay, thank you, Dr. Lund. Whereas Schrader Middle School, a middle school owned by Grand Forks Public School District Number One, sustained substantial damage to a roof section over the Family Consumer Science Lab, classroom and conference room on April 25th, 2022. And whereas the damage is a result of excessive loads being placed on the structure with the recent heavy rain and snow events throughout the winter of 2021, 22. And whereas failure to immediately proceed with the repair of the roof at Schrader Middle School, including the existing roof structure, and provide for storm, storm water management will likely result in further damage to the building and impacts on teaching and learning at Schrader Middle School. And whereas repairs required to correct the multiple issues at Schrader Middle School due to such structural roof collapse are significant, far exceed, excuse me, North Dakota Century Code 48-01.2-02.1, bid construction threshold of $200,000. Whereas under North Dakota Century Code 15.1-09-33, the school board has general control and supervision of all matters pertaining to the public schools. Whereas under North Dakota Century Code 48-01.2-04, the school board has the authority to declare an emergency situation and contract for a public improvement without seeking bids as prescribed in North Dakota Century Code 48-01.2. We're almost to the bottom. Whereas the school board found that an emergency situation is required immediate response with the current state of the roof at Schrader Middle School existed and passed a motion to declare an emergency concerning Schrader Middle School at the school board meeting on May 9th, 2022, in accordance with North Dakota Century Code 48-01.2-04. And whereas the school board also finds an emergency situation exists concerning the storm water management in the courtyard at Schrader Middle School, which requires an immediate response. Now therefore, be it resolved that the school board, Grand Forks Public School District Number One, declared by passage of a motion on May 9th, 2022, an emergency situation existed at Schrader Middle School due to the structural collapse of the roof. And that was all vetted by our legal team.
Any clarifying questions or comments about the proposed resolution? Go ahead, Doug.
I guess, I'm not sure what we're result, we're resolving by this. You know, so the school board declared by passage of a motion that an emergency existed. To me, the, the resolve just says what we did. It doesn't say anything about any, anything else.
We, we have the resolution in here now to do work in the courtyard, to do infill work, that was absent at our last meeting. So there's basically two key points in here. It's the roof, and then to do the infill in the courtyard. And legal thought we should have both of these.
So we, we added an, an additional whereas, is that what-
Yes.
So do we have to rescind the prior emergency action and then approve this one? Because it's like this one's, it's taking that one's place.
Yeah, we talked about that, and we didn't believe we needed to rescind the first one.
Other clarifying questions or comments?
I'd move approval.
Doug moves approval, do we have a second? Mr. Manley? Jeff's seconds? Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
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 Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Now let's move on to the new 7F, which is Schrader Middle School Courtyard Project, it's on electronic page 44. We're starting the Chris and Brandon show right now, so go ahead, Chris.
All right, good evening, Board President and Board Members. Page 44, the memorandum talking about Schrader Middle School's courtyard. As you guys are aware, we had a structural failure over in the Family Consumer Science classroom, lab, and conference room. And during our previous meeting on May 9th, we discussed the ramifications and kind of some possible solutions to address those failures. One of those, maybe to better define the scenarios that were outlined in that meeting, were the courtyard drainage issue. As Brady shared with me a day or two before that meeting, that courtyard collects an excessive amount of water from the roof structure, it's referred to as street or sheet drainage, and it collects into that area, and then as a result, it doesn't drain anywhere and it actually goes into the crawl space. Obviously, we need to repair the roof over the fax lab, classroom, and conference room. And then a, kind of a secondary item that was thrown in was the consideration to infill the courtyard area itself and expand it into a commons slash enhanced learning environment, which we would do by breaking into small group spaces, reconfiguring some classroom environments to better utilize the space. And then the last item that was brought forward was a structural and storm water analysis of the entire, entire building, to ensure we don't have failure anywhere else. A series of events have occurred since our last meeting. We have selected a forensic firm, WJE, out of Minneapolis, will be providing us a structural and storm water analysis. WJE is a firm that has worked on multiple projects, including the I-35 bridge collapse and the Twin Towers. They come strongly recommended and, and came in with an impressive resume. I'm hopeful I'll have a report in front of you, some initial findings probably into June, and then probably by August, we should have a full report to be able to share with the community, along with the board. We also have selected an architect to begin design, not only depending on what our, our scope and scale of our project is, but, but to provide those renderings and designs for our contractor, and that will be Icon Architectural will be providing our architectural service. And then lastly, we have selected a contractor to perform the work at the school, and that will be PCL Community. We are planning to execute a CMAR, and really, the reason for the CMAR selection is the time and the stress on the resources of the school district to manage this project along with our other projects. I wanted to bring forward some rough order of magnitudes for each of these projects that we're going to, you know, consider tonight. First, we need to address the roof over the classrooms, conference room, and lab. That came in just shy of $550,000. That project would basically take the old roof off and put a new roof back on. There would be no change to the learning environment, the classroom would, all those rooms would go back to normal, just like they were today. If we do select that option, we do need to consider addressing the drainage within the courtyard. That space does not, it has a drain tell system within it, but it, it's, it's 62 years old and it no longer functions. And as Brady probably knows this very well, and Catherine as well, is the trees have taken over that space and made it their own. And then a, lastly, a larger project would include enclosing that courtyard, as I talked about, and making a enhanced learning environment along with an expanded commons area, and that project comes in at just a little bit over 2.8 million. The administrative recommendation for this project is to proceed with the courtyard infill. That project will not only enhance the learning environment, but also address the storm water issues within- but also address the storm water issues within that space. Any questions?
Clarifying questions or comments? Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Looking at the options, Mr. Arnold, and I would imagine that there would be some time required. When we look at the third option for the courtyard and additional classrooms, looking at that, who would be involved? What type of a timeline to determine what is best for the students of Schrader? How best to build that so that as we start to look down the road with what are we going to be doing with some buildings? Trying to assure that whatever is done, it sets the school up for a good number of years, and I'm sure that's already being done. But is there a process, people involved at this point? Or is it, are we in the discussion point? Any additional information yourself or leadership could provide?
Yeah, so let's talk about Schrader long-term facility planning-wise. When we look back to 1998, the last time Schrader Middle School was added on to, there was a larger vision for that school to enhance the sixth grade pod by replacing it with a brand-new addition that would mirror the seventh and eighth grade pods. And then additionally, it also infilled that courtyard area and developed a new media center that would serve as kind of the central hub for the school. Now, while today we don't have those resources to make those drastic changes, this is a step in that direction for the future of the school. Now, hopefully that answers that piece. There was a lot of questions in there. So you did a good job of putting a lot together.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Excuse me. You're not suggesting that the media center is going to go into that new spot. You're just saying we're going to fill in that spot, but it's not going to be identified. I just don't want the public to think all of a sudden there's a new media center on the table.
Correct, correct. Today's project, our goal is to infill the space, revitalize those classrooms, create some collaborative learning environments, look at the fax lab and how that is arranged in that space to not only provide some unique learning opportunities, but also to expand that commons space where the kids currently eat lunchroom. I haven't counted up how many kids can eat lunch in there, but I would suspect two people here may know how many kids can, and it is not a lot. It is a very small lunchroom. So this would be a really great opportunity to enhance Schrader's experience for those kids.
Can I just ask a follow-up question and I'll dump it back to you? When you do go through a process like that in general, who's involved with the imagineering of the space and stuff? I mean, is there not staff involvement, student involvement, parent involvement? It's not just architects sitting in a building somewhere. It's the people that are going to utilize the building. Could you just maybe talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, so right now, if whatever direction the board decides to proceed, if we decide that we want to infill the courtyard, I've actually already, I already have meetings scheduled with Eric Ripley, Director of Curriculum and, or CTE. Sorry, I've got too many acronyms in my head. We'll also be meeting with the administrators this week. Follow-up meetings to that would be with our teaching staff in that area and any other folks that are identified by the administration at Schrader to figure out what is the best option because there's classrooms all the way around that courtyard. And there might be some opportunity to change some configurations and better enhance the environment. Our goal is not just to put it back together the way it was. It would be rather to enhance the space that would better suit not only the teaching that's occurring, but the teaching that could occur in that space as we continue to evolve our curriculum.
Thank you. Now back to Chris Douthat.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Arnold. Yeah, I guess I put a lot in that. What I was leading to, and I believe we've got the answer, is I'm being stewards of the people's money. I think getting that type of an answer was important. Again, we know where our position is as a board. Entrust the professionals, let them do the work, and it sounds like that's certainly in place. But I think it's, you confirmed what I was thinking, but it's a statement for the public to understand. So I do appreciate your answer.
Yeah, and it's going to take us time to collect that data as well. And, you know, really, the mission continues to always evolve at the school level. So we try to be as forward-thinking and make sure that we encompass as many stakeholders as possible to develop a product that's the most useful.
Further clarifying questions, comments? Go ahead, Doug.
So as I understand it, if we do the full project, value is about 3.4 million. We won't be impinging upon and have to redo if we ultimately, two, three years down the road, do a much larger project at Schrader. This will be part, have accomplished a small portion of that overall larger project.
Yeah, correct. This really does set the stage for a media center move. If that was the direction that the district decided to choose at a later date, it infills that space and provides a nice open, in fact, where, you know, the goal would be to actually restructure the support system over that area to take the snow load and the rain load off of that particular section, including that lower section of roof, reconfigure that, install new storm drainage. Really, we are taking a very large leap ahead in the planning side, which will make the transition, whatever it is, it may not be a media center. It might be something else that we're not considering today. But it sets the stage for that piece and really prepares Schrader for a much longer life cycle than what it currently has, obviously.
And then I guess another follow-up to that, the funding side of it. As we talked about last time, this basically comes about by a delay of a number of projects at various elementary schools relating to this. You can maybe, I don't remember exactly what was all in, but it's part of that bond issue, correct?
Correct, yeah. So this would be funded by kind of a couple sources. So I could probably share a little bit with the board where we're at right now. I've visited with our insurance provider, Travelers, along with FEMA. The project to replace the roof likely is a very strong candidate to be funded by one or both potentially, which could potentially take a pretty good chunk of this lift off of our budget. Now, Doug, the remaining amounts that you're referring to, those projects, you are correct, would pull from that $1 million bond payment we're going to make for 20 years. We're hopeful that'll generate right around 16 million, where we're going to probably scale back and figure out some other ways to fund. Maybe, you know, some different financing or whatever it is would be on the fire alarm, you know, clock, public address system, mass notification system. We may go to those areas of greatest need first and then try to backfill from there. And it's good to keep in mind, we would go after the heaviest lifts like our high schools and middle schools, which would allow us to backfill with an elementary school, which is much more in our budget range each year with our remaining 1.5 million.
Go ahead.
We've all seen what a building collapse can do or a roof collapse can do to a building and whatnot. Just wondering if we've had engineers or yourself up there to shore up everything that's needed so students aren't in peril or anything like that?
Yeah, so right now, the three spaces that are underneath this roof section, they are not using. We have moved those students to elsewhere in the building. I believe they're using the media center slash library space until the end of this year. You bring up a good point. This is obviously a very bad sign for our buildings, and really, that's where that forensic engineering piece comes through. So that's going to be a couple, it's going to be a little bit of a complex process, but there'll be an initial takeoff analysis of what is on paper. How was the building designed? What are those loads, live loads, dead loads, what's existing up there? And then they will come on site and validate. I do suspect at some point, either in June or July, I'll be bringing back some sort of news. I hope it's good. But I do suspect there'll be some things that we may need to talk about further at Schrader because this is a, obviously, a very serious condition that has occurred. And to think it's not anywhere else in the same era of building, not only at Schrader, but at other buildings. So we continue to remain vigilant, looking for things that are out of place. Is there a new crack in a wall? Is there ceiling tiles falling down? Is something wet that normally is not wet? Is there water pouring down a wall? These are all typically the signs that we see when we start to see some major deflection in that roof deck, similar to what we had at Red River a couple of years ago.
Cynthia, do you have any clarifying questions for us?
Whether their curriculum had been disrupted or if they were able to move within the building. Chris just alluded to moving. I don't know about the curriculum aspect. I don't know if Chris knows about that.
Cynthia, we couldn't hear you for the first part. I don't know if you need to repeat. We got it, I guess. I must have bad hearing.
Yeah, I believe the question is about whether or not the Family Consumer Science was able to continue with their planned-on curriculum, and the answer to that is no. But what they are still doing is continuing within the standards, within the Family Consumer Science. But there's not an ability to conduct the foods labs, which a lot of times are built in at this time of the year for obvious reasons, and plus, kids like to eat. So they're just creative problem-solving by their, Ms. Bryant, the fax teacher there.
Cynthia, did that answer your question?
That's good. Thank you. I had gotten that question, so I appreciate that, Catherine. Thank you.
Before we go on and vote on this, we need to backtrack. We need to go back to the emergency declaration that we just approved because there was a second page to that declaration that none of us had. So I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Brenner. Sorry for the inconvenience to the board.
You know, I officiated basketball for 26 years and there was no playback replay to see your missed opportunities or missed calls. But certainly, we have playback here and there's a missed opportunity on my behalf. And so to Doug's question, Doug had a legitimate question, and the question has to do with page two that you didn't have in front of you. So if you could flip that document over, the resolution, this is where it starts talking about, and Cynthia, this is for you as well, so I'll just read it out loud. Now be it further resolved, the school board of Grand Forks Public School District Number One, as of May 9th, 2022, authorized the administration to contract without seeking bids as prescribed in North Dakota Century Code 48-01.2 with an architect, structural engineer, and a contractor to repair the roof at Schrader Middle School and remodel the existing roof structure. Now be it further resolved that the school board of Grand Forks Public School District declares an emergency situation exists at Schrader Middle School due to poor water drainage in the courtyard. Now be it further resolved, the school board of Grand Forks Public School District Number One authorizes the administration to contract without seeking bids as prescribed in North Dakota Century Code 48-01.2 with an architect, engineer, and/or contractor to plan for the effective storm water management and remedial measures concerning the courtyard at Schrader Middle School. Now be it further resolved that the execution of this resolution is conclusive evidence of the board's approval of the actions and of the authority granted herein. My apologies for that. And Doug, thank you for that question again.
So I think what we probably should do, and I'll defer to other people in the room too, is we probably should rescind that motion, that resolution that we just passed, and then pass this one. But before we do that, I'll open it up for further clarifying questions or comments. And I'm looking over at our smart man over there, Doug. Doug, questions, comments, thoughts?
The only question that I have as relates to this, is this for the entire $3.4 million project and this emergency declaration, or just the two smaller pieces?
This covers whatever the board decides to proceed with.
Okay.
Because some of this isn't defined yet, Doug.
Okay. So when it talks about storm water management and remedial measures, that's talking about the fill-in of it as well?
And that's talking about also the forensic findings that we'll have from our structural engineer.
I just wanted to be clear on that and make sure that we're, so I would move that we rescind our original resolution approved prior.
Do we have a second for that? We have a second by Mr. Douthat. So the motion is to rescind our motion that we just approved, our emergency motion or resolution. Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
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 Opposed, no? Okay, thank you. Now we need to approve the new emergency resolution.
So moved?
We have a motion by Chris. Do we have a second? Second by Doug. Now, any further clarifying questions or comments regarding the new emergency resolution? Cynthia, do you have any?
Is it, I'm sorry, this is Cynthia. So are we approving a $3.4 million project then?
This is just the emergency resolution. We'll have to get on to that vote after this one. So we had to backtrack a little bit. So this would just prove the emergency resolution.
Got it.
Any further questions? Seeing none, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the emergency resolution, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay. And Amber, is that you on there or are we echoing in there?
Yep, it's me.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now, let's go back to the Schrader Middle School Courtyard Project. Any further clarifying questions or comments? So what we have in front of us is the administrative recommendation is to fill in the courtyard and provide a clear-story window area that will provide natural lighting in the classroom surrounding the courtyard. And it's estimated, and I would emphasize estimated, at approximately 3.4 million. Amber, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Cynthia?
I do not either.
Okay. So what is the board's wishes? Do we have a motion from somebody? So Doug moves approval of the administrative recommendation. Do we have a second? Second by Jeff. Okay, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
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 Opposed, no? Motion carries. Thank you. Now let's move on to, where are we? We're on to G, selection of architect for Valley Middle School and A&E Services on pages 45 through 47. Chris A.
All right. As you guys are well aware, administration has completed its due diligence and complied with North Dakota Century Code in the selection of an architectural and engineering services as it relates to a potential Valley Middle School. The selection process, advertisement period, interviews, et cetera, were all in compliance with North Dakota Century Code 54-44.7. We did some, we had a, we had a bid period. We also had a interview with each of the prospective firms, and then we also had a mandatory site visit. We had three firms that responded and attended our meeting, and that would be EAPC, Icon, and Michael Burns. Through the evaluation process, Icon Architects was the highest scoring. EAPC was second highest scoring, and Michael Burns was the third highest scoring. And you'll find that on your attachment on the second page. The selection committee, the agency selection committee, is also defined in your packet on page 47. And that was made up of the superintendent, associate superintendent, business manager, director of buildings and grounds, and maintenance supervisor. So the agency selection committee recommends Icon Architects for the proposed work at Valley Middle School.
Clarifying questions, comments? Doug moves approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Chris. Amber, do you have any clarifying questions?
I don't have a question, but maybe just a comment to state for the record that the previous bid we had, where we selected two firms, that's off the table now, correct?
You referring to the referendum from last June?
Yes, just to absolutely just make sure that that's clear.
I think Mr. Arnold will help explain that for us.
Yeah, Amber, you're correct. The previous work that was done prior to the referendum last June of '21, that firm or firms were both notified that they were relieved of their services shortly after the failed referendum.
Cynthia, do you have any clarifying questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Seeing no further questions or comments, the motion is to approve Icon Associates for the proposed work at Valley Middle School. Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
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 Opposed, no? Motion carries. Thank you. Let's move on to item 7H, which is approval of special education ESER expenditure. It's electronic page 48. Chris?
All right. Grand Forks Public Schools' special education ESER funds are available. We currently have a balance that exceeds the $200,000 for this particular project. And we would like to utilize some of those funds to remodel a space over like to utilize some of those funds to remodel a space over Kelly Elementary. So in order for us to stay compliant with state and federal ESER program guidelines, the school board approval is required to expend these funds. Just some back information, ESER 1, 2, and 3 are a little bit different than the special education ESER. They actually are dropped into a different bucket and actually come with a little bit of a different twist to them. Basically, the funds must be expended that directly impact a special needs improvement that will directly impact those students. Hopefully, that made sense there. Over at Kelly Elementary, maybe to go further into the need, Kelly Elementary is experiencing growth, and the current special education space is really ill-suited to provide adequate space and means for those students. The project that we are proposing would go through the multipurpose room, storage room, and associated hallway area, and renovate those spaces to provide two new classrooms, a sensory room, and a couple of intervention rooms. Those classrooms would also have sinks within them. The remodel will require some realignment of existing walls, new electrical, modification of HVAC, additional plumbing, and removal and replacement of the floor covering. The project itself is expected to cost right around $200,000. Work would begin on June 6 and be completed by June or August the 12. Contractor has been selected, and we should be able to meet those budgets and timelines. Administration recommendation is to prove the expenditure of special education ESER funds for the Kelly Elementary special needs renovation.
For those of us that were on the tour of Kelly, I think we probably... You probably remember that space, which was quite suboptimal. So clarifying questions, comments from board members? I don't hear any. Does anybody have a motion to make? Chris?
Move. Move. We accept this.
Okay. Do we have a second? Second by whomever you want to pick, Cindy. Assuming a roll call vote, the administrative recommendation is to approve the expenditure of a special education ESER funds for Kelly Elementary project. All those in favor, please state aye.
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 Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. We move on from the Chris Show to the Brandon Show. Let's move on to 7J, which is the initial resolution for general obligation school building bonds. It's on page 51 and 52. Brandon?
Thank you, President Lunn, members of the board. During your last board meeting, you set the date aside, September 27, 2022, for special election to consider general obligation bond levy. And so I first provide a memorandum, just kind of laying out some of the next steps and the authorities around those. So I'll just address that quickly. According to North Dakota Century Code, Chapter 210307, we can set a governing body of any public school district may, by resolution adopted a two-thirds of this body's vote, dedicate tax levies that are authorized to issue general obligation bonds. This can be used for purchase, construction, reconstruction, repair of any school. And then this, the same 60-day period for a board resolution and 50 days after official newspaper. So it lays out a couple of those next steps that we'd have to take. That's for the general obligation school building bonds. And then, of course, the authority in the board for setting a special election is that it must be held no later than October 1 of the year, in which the taxes to be levied and the elections must be conducted under North Dakota Election Code. If the special election's on a previously defeated ballot, measure a minimum 90 days must elapse between. And then, for any levy that involves capital improvements or building funds, a supermajority or vote of 60% of the voters must be reached. And then attached to this memo is also a timeline, just to give you some awareness as to some of these next steps that'll take place. And so there'll be a series of administrative work here, should these referendum be accepted, to fully publicize the special election, as well as the details of the general obligation. So that's just a little bit ahead of the next two items, actually, or they do require your action. So that next agenda item is the actual initial resolution proposed for issuance of general obligation bonds, in the amount not to exceed $55 million for the school building construction. And then the special election will be held Tuesday, September 27, 2022, for the purpose of submitting qualified voters of the district to question whether or not the initial resolution for general obligation school board, school building bond should be approved. The administrative recommendation is to approve the initial resolution for general obligation school building. I believe that resolution is in the packet, and I'd be happy to read that aloud. But the crux of this here, just to reiterate the main points, is that this is a maximum amount of bonds to be issued, 55 million, and that's to construct and equip a new middle school, demolish the existing Valley Middle School, construct and modernize the child nutrition facility, and otherwise improve and renovate school property. I'd be happy to answer any questions here.
And the actual resolution is on the electronic, on electronic page 52, for anybody who's having trouble finding it. So the recommendation from administration is to approve that initial resolution for general obligation school building bonds. I'll open it up to any clarifying questions or comments. Cynthia, do you have any?
Well, I'm reading the resolution. I'm reading the resolution on page 52, number two, and maybe just explain, and to otherwise improve and renovate school property. So I get equipping a new middle school, constructing, equipping, equipping, demolishing it, constructing the child nutrition facility, but what is, and to otherwise improve and renovate school property, please.
Sure. Board Member Schaub, that is to clarify some of the ground improvement that may take place. There'll be some definition given to this throughout the, you know, engineering and public input process. But you could imagine where the current Valley Middle School structure sits, that we would then improve that back to green space, or athletic fields, or something adjacent to that. So that language is meant to capture what takes place there.
Thank you. I appreciate that. That clarifies it.
Amber, any clarifying questions or comments?
No.
Thank you. Any board members at the table? Okay. Can I get a motion and a second? Motion by Jeff to approve the resolution.
Second.
Second by Mr. Douthat. Okay. Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
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 Opposed, no. Motion carries. Let's move on to Item K, which is resolution calling a special election to vote on the question of approving an initial resolution for general obligation school building bonds. It's on pages 53 through 56 electronically. Brandon?
President Lunn, I appreciate that. So this is exactly that. It's the resolution needed to call for a special election vote on what was just previously discussed, the $55 million general obligation school bond. You'll find on page 54, the electronic packet is just how this would read. A couple of points worth pointing out here, that this would be a one precinct, precinct and one polling place special election. That polling place has been identified as likely the closest venue that could accommodate such a vote on a school day as to the project. So this is at the Frederick Fritz D. Pollard Junior Athletic Center, or the High Performance Center is known for, just on the east side of UND's campus at 2419 Second Avenue North. And this poll location would be open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And then, just after that point onsite, the votes would be counted by the election volunteers, and the vote canvassed by this board at a later date. So this also then includes the actual language that would go in front of ballot, and I'd like to read this, so it's clear. The question would be, shall Grand Forks Public School District Number One of Grand Forks County, North Dakota, issue its general obligation bonds in the amount not to exceed 55 million maturing within a maximum of 20 years, resulting in an estimated additional millage of 15.92, equal to $15.92 on each $1,000 of taxable valuation for the first taxable year, for the purpose of providing funds, together with any other funds available, to construct and equip a new middle school, demolish the existing Valley Middle School, construct and modernize the child nutrition facility, and to otherwise improve and renovate school property. There was a question, I think, about the length of this language, and I just want to point out that, you know, we were working with both bond counsel and attorneys, that this language is relatively, it's prescriptive, and there's not very much we can change at all. In fact, the only flexibility we would have, or you would have as a board, is those final points that scope the project. And I would, it'd be my recommendation to keep those, because it scopes the project fourfold. To construct the new school, demolish the old school, construct the child nutrition facility, and then otherwise improve the grounds, as we just discussed. Those would all be important elements of the project.
I think the issue that came up wasn't so much the length, but was that the resulting in an estimated additional millage of 15.92 mils, equal to $15.92 on each $1,000 taxable, and that's like not English to anybody. You know, could you say it's going to cost X dollars per year on a $200,000 home? And it sounds like we can't do that. But that'll be part of our educational process to the communities, explained to... Because I looked back on the previous two referendums, and we had that same verbiage in there. And most people don't understand that. So I think that... So what you're saying is, we got to keep it written like that, but then our job is going to be educating the public. What does that statement mean as far as actual dollars and cents for their taxes?
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Okay. Doug?
I guess the only question I have is, the Fritz Pollard Athletic Center, you know, parking, access, I really, I mean, the Alera Center's got such great available parking and access that... And I went to get a COVID test there at least once, and to me, it's not necessarily really convenient, and that'd be my concern.
Dr. Brenner will explain why.
We lost access to the Alera Center. So we went to the next best available source that would accommodate this number of people. And both Brandon and I did a walkthrough with Eric Martenson and one of his colleagues last Friday, and we're really confident that we're going to keep it all on one level, on the mezzanine level, and how the voting booths can be set up, how people can register. So they won't need stairs, they won't need the elevator. And we think the, there's literally 300 feet of corridor in length, and about 15 feet in width, and it's kind of sectioned off. So we think it's going to work. They also told us the parking spaces would be available, the ones close to the building for those who need it. And then right across the street, we did ask, is there going to be any construction going on in that parking lot? And if there is, it wouldn't be in that front row where people would be parking. Both Mr. Martenson and his colleague asked, you know, what we can expect for traffic, and we said the peak hours are typically 7:00 to 8:00 in the morning, lunch hour, and then after work. But there's usually a steady stream of 50 or 60 people in line, and that venue can handle that. Sorry, I'm not looking over here very much, but we're feeling good about that.
Could it... May I ask why the Alera Center wasn't available? I mean, people are going to be confused, just because they've gone there for years now.
Yeah, they're locked into another bender for three days.
Other clarifying questions or comments? Mr. Douthat?
Just wanted to say thank you for that, because the first thought ran through my mind were stairs, elderly, people like me, who would... It's just single level, makes it much easier. So I would agree with what Mr. Carpenter's had said, yet based on that, it seems this would be a logical choice, and it's sufficient parking. So appreciate your efforts.
Cynthia, do you have any clarifying questions or comments?
I guess, one thing I would say is, I don't think people necessarily yet have learned it by the Frederick Fritz Pollard Athletic Center, but rather as the site for COVID testing. And then the other question I... That's a comment. The other, the question I would have is, what about construction on the corner? Because that's been pretty much fenced off for ever, I don't know how long now.
Dr. Brenner?
There's no plans to have that under construction right there on the corner of Columbia and what, First Avenue North?
Yeah, on the west side of the old Memorial Stadium, they are going to be constructing the new coaches' offices. And then anchored on top of that will be apartment living, and that is not supposed to have any effect on that corner, according to the people we visited with last Friday. We asked the same question, so thank you, Cynthia.
Well, I guess my comment would be to do as much around the testing site, just because I think a lot of people know where that is or was.
You mean to refer to it as the testing site?
Well, I mean, you can't, because it's not a testing site, but somehow, somehow messaging that. I just, I don't think that the Pollard Center has caught on yet.
Okay. We'll make sure people know where it is, and then I think we'll be able to absentee vote again. Like, I haven't been to a polling booth in 10 years. I just vote absentee all the time. So we can encourage all of that. Amber, did you have any clarifying questions or comments?
I do not.
Thank you. Do we have a motion and a second? We have a motion by Doug. Do we have a second? We have a second by Jeff. Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
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 Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Let's move on to, I'm getting lost in all my chicken scratch. Are we on to L, Brandon, or where are we at? Community high lease, or?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so we're on to the renewal of the community high lease. It's electronic pages 57 through 65, but I see something at my, at the desk side. So you help us wander through this.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, President Lunn. So that's right, in the packet itself is the memo with the attached lease. This does call for a resolution, so that's what's seated at your desk place there. I will read that, too, to accommodate for the callers here. But this lease was originated July 1, 2020. It's for annual renewal, up to five years. So the last time that we could hold that is through June 30, 2025. But as stated in this agreement, is that we must pass a resolution each year to renew that lease agreement. So that's what's in front of you here. The details of that include that the rent for one year of the facility, sorry, by name, that's the Community High School in the North Dakota Vision Services, or School for the Blind, located at 500 Stanford Avenue. The rent for a one-year period is, from July 1, 2022, to June 30, 2023, is $9.75 per square foot, since the district is leasing 17,370 square feet within the building. That's an annual cost of $169,358, plus an additional $37.50 to pay rent for the space occupied by the district's portable classroom, located in the northeast corner of the parking lot there. The administrative approval is to, the recommendation is to approve a resolution to renew this lease. This resolution reads like this. Whereas the Grand Forks Public School District Number One executed a lease, with the state of North Dakota acting through its Department of Public Instruction, North Dakota Vision Services, School for the Blind, signed on May 1, 2020, and May 4, 2020, for the Grand Forks Public School District Number One to lease 17,370 square feet of office and classroom space in the education building and the workshop corridor area of the North Dakota Vision Services, School for the Blind Building, and Rooms 260 and 264 of the south wing, second floor, and occupy one portable classroom unit. And whereas, under Section 2 of this lease, the initial term of the lease is 12 months, commencing on the first day of July 2020, and ending the 30th day of June 2021. And whereas, the lease may be renewed annually until the 30th day of June 2025, and the term of the lease is subject to ratification under Section 6 of the lease. And whereas, under Section 2 of the lease, an additional term must be ratified in accordance with Section 6 of the lease. And whereas, under Section 6 of the lease, the lease will terminate unless the School Board of Grand Forks Public School District Number One passes a resolution to ratify and continue the lease annually until June 30, 2025. And whereas, the Grand Forks Public School District Number One desires to continue leasing the premise for an additional year under the terms and conditions of such lease agreement, now therefore be it resolved, that the School Board of Grand Forks Public School District Number One ratifies and renews the lease executed by and between the Grand Forks Public School District Number One and the state of North Dakota, acting through its Department of Public Construction, North Dakota Vision Services, School for the Blind, signed on May 1, 2020, and May 4, 2020, for an additional term commencing July 1, 2020. July 1, 2022, and ending June 30, 2023, under the terms and conditions as contained in such lease agreement. Now, be it further resolved, the execution of the resolution is conclusive evidence of the board's approval of this action.
Clarifying questions, comments from board members? Amber or Cynthia?
Yes, I have one.
Go ahead.
Oh, I have one question. Do we use, does the school district use the portable?
I see a lot of yeses. I don't know if anybody's going to actually turn their mic on.
Yes, that's used for our.
I just wondered.
That's used for our encore space. That portion is also paid back through our 21st Century grant funds as well, so we lease that space back technically from the district's lease with encore dollars.
Okay, so it's not used by Community High School, because the, since that renovation, I think it's, they're all contained in the school, correct? So encore is special.
That's correct. Yep.
Thank you.
Any other clarifying questions or comments? If not, the administration recommendation is to approve the resolution as outlined. Do I hear a motion in a second? Move by Jeff, second by Mr. Carpenter. Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
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 Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Let's move on to item seven, N, SRO agreement for 2022, 2023. Oh, sorry, I skipped the parks. We're back to M. Renewal of shared parks and facilities use agreement. It's on electronic pages 66 through 72, and then I think we have something at the table side. Brandon, this is your last shot at us tonight.
Thank you, President Lund. So attached here is the copy of the Shared Parks and Facilities Use Agreement. What is sitting at the table side here is the Exhibit A and B, and C, which are a list of facilities, and I can explain those. So this current agreement is set to end here, June 30, 2022, and the attached agreement would bring, or begin, July 1, 2022, and end June 30, 2023. But it'll automatically renew for a second term from July 1, 2023, to June 30, 2024. That's why this one is asking for essentially two years approval, in case this wouldn't come back to the board, you're essentially approving it for two. The net annual fees for locations listed in that Exhibit A will be $5,900 for July 1, 2022, to June 30, 2023, and then $6,200 for July 1, 23, to June 30, 24. The net annual fees for location listed in Exhibit B will be $114,500 for the first year, from July 1, 22, to June 30, 23, and $120,000 for July 1, 23, to June 30, 24. And then there's a special, a special call out here, fees for Kingswalk Golf Course listed in Exhibit C will be $5,250 for July 1, 22, to June 30, 23, and then, and $5,500 for the second year, July 1, 23, to June 30, 2024. There's a couple of other details here. Just in between things, there's going to be some work to rectify the Cushman facility, for example, is, is actually a, a school facility, but it's on the utility bill for the Parks District, so some of those details are laid out here, but this is the same agreement that was in front of the board the year prior, and so nothing materially has changed. There's just a promise both the Park and School Districts will work to physically split that utility back to the rightful place it should be. The administrative recommendation is to renew the Shared Parks and Facilities Use Agreement. It's a great partnership that allows access to facilities in both directions.
And you can tell by Exhibits A, B, and C how much mutual use there is between the two entities. Clarifying questions, comments from any board members? Go ahead, Mr. Douthat.
I would move we approve the renewal of the Shared Parks and Facilities Use Agreement.
Do we have a second? Second by Doug. Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
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 Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you, Brandon. Now, let's move on to item seven, N, which is SRO agreement 2022, 2023, on electronic pages 73 through 77. Catherine?
Yes, Mr. Bromback can take a sip of water and maybe have a cough drop after all of that narrative, so thank you for that. So as Dr. Lund said, on page 79 of your packet, you'll see a memorandum understanding from, between the Grand Forks Public Schools and the School Resource Officer or the City Department there. We've had a longstanding agreement with them, and we are pleased to continue that arrangement, cooperative arrangement with them. Our SROs have a dramatic proactive and positive effect on school climate safety and resource collaboration for our youth, and each SRO is assigned not only to their lead secondary campus, but they also support various elementary schools, Community High School, and others off-site programming. There are two notable changes to past, the last year's agreement. One has to do with a plan in place for multiple days of absenteeism for our SROs. Some of our SROs are, have other responsibilities for the department, so they may be brought out for training for about a week's time, and we want to make sure that we're not leaving any building uncovered. There's also a increase in $8,541.19 in the previous year because of natural increases to salary and health insurance. So administrative recommendation is to approve the memorandum of agreement, School Resource Officer Services, for the term beginning July 1, 2022, and ending June 30, 2023, and authorize the superintendent of schools to sign the agreement.
Clarifying questions? Seeing none, do we have a motion? We have a motion by Jeff to approve it, I assume is the motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any further clarifying questions?
Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead, Cynthia.
I have one question.
Go ahead, Cynthia.
Catherine, what about at, at the middle school levels? Are the SROs there all through the school day?
That is correct. There might be days that they're called to testify in court or to serve an elementary school, for example, that might have a, an impending issue, but otherwise they are there on the daily. That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion is to approve the agreement, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
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 Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you, Catherine. Now, we've all, what we've all been waiting for, 7O, which is policy review, pages 78 through 150. Dr. Schab.
Thank you. So we are going to quickly do some of these, because it looks long, but it's not. The first group, the following policies are recommended for completion of their second reading as written, amended and adopted. I don't think I'll read all of those. It's 1 through 25.
Actually, through 34, the next page.
Oh, actually, 1 through 34, sorry, 1 through 34. If anyone has any questions, otherwise I'd make a motion to approve those for our second reading.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Douthat. Any questions or concerns about any of those policies for the second reading? Seeing none, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
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 Opposed, no. Motion carries. Back to you, Cynthia.
The next motion is to rescind the following policies, and there are five listed in our packet. I'd make a motion to rescind 6144, 1305, 7301, 2110, and 3200.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Douthat. Any further clarifying questions or comments? Seeing none, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
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 Opposed, no. Motion carries. Back to you, Cynthia.
Thank you. We have two that we met recently to complete, or I'd make a motion to approve these as first reading, ABBB, Community Use of District Property, and ABAA, School District Organization Plan.
Do we have a second?
Motion to approve those.
Okay, do we have a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Carpenter. Any further clarifying questions or comments? Seeing none, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Back to you, Cynthia.
The next one is to complete, just, we just need to do a, a one reading and adoption of these guidelines for determining class size. I'd make a motion to approve ABAA, BR.
Do we have a second? Second by Jeff. Further clarifying questions? Seeing none, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Back to you, Cynthia, for the last one.
The last one, a motion to rescind 6151 class size.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
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 Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. I don't think we've ever had a presentation from West Virginia before, so thank you. Let's move on to 7P, which is School Board Self-Assessment Committee Report. It's on electronic page 151. Mr. Douthat?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We were to have had a, a meeting, however, we did not have a quorum, so we could not host the meeting. So what I would recommend to the board is that we did a self-assessment screen last year, is we provide the same self-assessment to all board members, and we have it due on May 27. The third paragraph says June 27, but we would ask that all board members have that completed by May 27, and I believe this will require a, a motion and a second and a vote, correct, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would, I would move that we proceed with the self-assessment as we did last year, same, same model.
Do we have a second for that motion? Second by Jeff. So it'll go out, before a vote, it'll go out tomorrow, Cindy, and then be back on Friday.
And, Mr. Chairman, I would state that the, the survey is not time-consuming yet, it's certainly very informative.
We just need to get it out to our colleagues that aren't here and make sure they understand the turnaround time. So we have a motion in a second, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
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 Motion, I'm sorry, opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Let's move on to 7Q. I don't know if we've ever had a Q before, but let's go to that, the Emily Hahn Research Request, electronic pages 152 to 167. Dr. Brenner?
Thank you, Dr. Lund. Esper Policy GCC, Protection of People Rights Amendment and Third-Party Research on Students, and providing a research request on behalf of Emily C. Hahn. The research study will be used by Ms. Hahn for her dissertation, which is not uncommon for our schools to be used. Purpose of this study is to, is to use informative, evidence-based research evaluating the efficacy of AIM curriculum, which is social, emotional, behavioral curriculum for Kelly Elementary School students. The request has been staffed with Dr. Lewis, and also Kelly Tannehill, Principal at Kelly, and Amber Haskell, who's a special education teacher at Kelly, all whom approve of this proposed research. So attached, you can see her research, and it's our recommendation to allow Emily Hahn to proceed with her research following the guidance of Policy GCC.
Clarifying questions? Go ahead, Doug.
Did, did we not, she's done this before, hasn't she, that we've approved?
This is the second step.
We got a motion by Doug, do we have a second? Second by Jeff. Dr. Lewis, the, the, this isn't altering the AIM curriculum that's already being used, this is just looking at the results of it, so she's just analyzing what we're already doing in the school, correct? Okay, thank you. Any other clarifying questions or comments? Seeing none, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
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 Opposed, no. Motion carries. Let's move on to item eight, which is others, announcements. Dr. Brenner?
I just have one. Finance Committee will meet this Thursday at 5:00 p.m. Thank you.
My other ones are, don't forget June 2nd and June 5th, we got some very important graduations coming up, and I know our two student, people, two student board members will be disappointed if we're not there for their graduation, so. Dr. Brenner, I mean, sorry, Dr. Lewis, Catherine, do you have any announcements? Ready, do you have any announcements for us? Okay. Let's move on to board requests for future consideration. I actually have a, a thought as we were going over the SROs. I'm not sure we've heard much detail about the SRO program recently, and I'm just wondering if the next academic school year, we can maybe have an update at some point about the SRO program and, and what all it entails. Also, we'll have at least three new board members, so, so I think it'd be good. Other requests for future consideration. I think Dr. Brenner wants to make a couple comments about our student, student board member, because I'm not sure we're going to see them again after graduation. Maybe, maybe you can come to June if you want, in case you're not.
I have a feeling you've committed to our meeting on June 13th, is that correct? You're both going to be here?
Never mind, we're not going to make any comments then, so we'll save that, we'll save that for June. I was afraid we were going to lose them on, on June 5th, so, well, we look forward to talking about you at length on June 13th, so. School Board norms, Mr. Carpenter, how did we do?
I think we did an excellent job, and we were very time-efficient. Notice from scheduled adjournment of 9:21, we're now going to adjourn at 8:09. Very, congratulations to the chair.
When you, when you pad the timeline by an hour and a half, it's easy to, easy to look good at the end, so, well, we are adjourned, and we will hopefully see you all at graduations, and then our next school board meeting is June 12, 13, the day before the election.